Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, April 26th, 2018. If we could all please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into our agenda, I would just like to ask that we just give a moment of silence. We did have a passing away of a student that did go to Georgetown Public Schools through the middle school, Scott Erlinson, who was a great kid. He actually went to school with one of my children and, right, and I just want to let the family know that the school community here is thinking of them and his two sisters. So if we could just give a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, the first business on the agenda tonight is our consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve negotiation Subcommittee Minutes of March 29th, 2018, Governance Subcommittee Session Minutes of April 10th, 2018, and Safety Subcommittee Minutes of April 12th, 2018, with acceptance of warrants 44 P-18 and 43 V-18. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. It's a little group of us tonight. I'm not used to this. Okay, we have our student, Chloe Martins here. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Are you fresh off of vacation? It's always tough, isn't it, getting back into the swing of things?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't go anywhere, so.
Yeah, but you didn't go to school, so.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. There's a lot of Netflix and stuff like that.
Right, that's nice. How are things going in the school?
Good.
The fourth quarter.
I know, it's exciting. And the seniors are getting excited.
I bet.
And then the juniors are being excited to be seniors. Well, at least I am. Some of them are scared, but I'm excited.
I heard a few of the juniors are excited about getting the parking spaces that will be available once they can leave.
I get a parking space because of my boot right now, so I get to, because I'm allowed to drive with it if I take the boot off, but I get a little parking space, so.
Oh, that's funny.
Get a little taste of it for next year. I know, right, but I will, I'll be fruitful. So the showcase was supposed to be today, the senior showcase, but only five seniors signed up, so we moved it to May 11th. It's a Friday and it's going to be at seven now, and we opened it up to all high school grades, but the seniors are going to have, like, time at the end, so they're all going to be together at the end of the talent show it's going to be. So that's going to be fun. Prom, I think I mentioned last meeting, is May 18th. It's going to be at the Ipswich Country Club, so that's going to be super fun.
It's going to be nice.
AP tests are starting in two weeks, so getting prepared for that. I already mentioned the seniors is winding down, and the Corral Concert is May 10th, and that's a Thursday.
It's a busy night at May 10th.
Yeah, and I think next week is the band concert, but I'm not sure what date.
Okay. So for the, for the prom, no required transportation on that?
I don't think so. I think we drive ourselves, because it's mostly juniors and seniors that are going.
So what is, what is your thoughts on that?
Even in terms of whether to provide a?
Yeah, exactly, whether to provide a bus, because it is, I know before when it was in, you know, with the country club, it was different because it was there, but I know even like Triton, when they had theirs here, they had a bus, you know.
Actually, we've done, in other places I've been, that we've done that. We've done the bus, just because everybody, you can guarantee that everybody gets there safe. That's really, I think the kids don't necessarily like that, because I don't know if, at the Ipswich Country Club, if they'll go back to the limos, because that, I remember when it was in Danvers, and I think I've been to a couple of places, and they ever, you know, took limos, which is a huge expense, although in some ways maybe safer, you know, than driving your own car, you know. But, I don't know, I haven't talked to Mr. Wisha about that, as a matter of fact. You know, he didn't bring it up to me.
I'm not really sure.
I don't know if he's had any conversations with the kids, you know, I don't, I don't know. So I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
I mean, you know, I, I mean, you always, you always feel like, you know, it's safer. But what it means is that people, you know, kind of can't go away when they want, right? They, so though you say the bus leaves at such and such a time, and everybody has to hop on. And, so I don't know. I mean, I think for safety, it's always a great idea.
Yeah.
But, you know, I know, you know, kids and families sometimes feel it's a little restrictive, you know. But I think it's something that I'll bring up.
Maybe I'll touch base with them too about that.
And tickets are going on sale for the prom on Monday, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, the beginning of May, end of April, it was supposed to start, so.
And there's $65 a ticket?
Yes.
Which is a lot less than last year, right?
It was, last year it was a hundred.
Hundred and twenty-five.
I think it's the place, I think it's, the place was expensive this year.
Last year I forget where it was, but it was much more expensive.
It was that place in Topsfield.
It was a beautiful venue.
Yeah.
But it was cold, and it was expensive.
It's like Willowdale?
Willowdale, that's exactly.
Well, I hope you all have a great time. It's going to be a lot of fun out there. And I hope the weather is nice for it.
Yeah, me too.
Because the frolic weather was a little chilly.
I know, hopefully we can walk outside.
The grand march is really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. Well, thank you for coming tonight. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, the first item up for, I don't know if the price is right. First, we have our Technology Integration Specialists, which I'm really excited about. I know, so if we have Colin, we have Liz, Sandra, and Mary Ann, if you could all come on.
I'll come up first and talk about iPad One to One Initiative, and then I'll invite our Integrations Specialists.
Yep, that's fine.
Shouldn't take long unless, I was happy to answer questions, but in your packets, you have the letter that was sent home earlier this week to all of our GMHS families and our current sixth grade families at Penbrook, an invitation for them to participate in the iPad One to One Initiative. There is not much different from the rollout that we did last year in terms of the options that we're offering, the price points that the iPad comes in, should they choose to lease from the school. The company that we are using as far as a collection service to manage those payments is still fax. We met with their representative a couple of weeks ago, just to make sure everything was still on the up and up, and what we can do to make sure that we don't have any fees that we ended up getting hit with this year, because we didn't reach the minimum number of annual fees. We had to reach a certain number of annual fees, however, we unexpectedly had more families purchase the iPad in one payment, and there was no fee attached to that. So we ended up, we ended up having to take the.
So the district paid that? And how much was that?
It was about $470.
Yeah. And we were talking, I think, we're trying to move some things around this year so we can make sure that we don't hit that fee again, but we kind of said, to not have anyone be responsible for billing, managing payments, reaching out to delinquent families, that's a fee that we are, we are okay with that. And yeah, it's been, it's been a really good partnership. I log into my account every month, just to make sure all the accounts are still active and are up to date, and if they're not, a gentle reminder to a family. More often than not, it's, you know, my debit card changed and they sent me a new one, so I forgot to switch it over. So that's, that's gone nicely this year.
Right.
We are offering, again, the 120 gigabyte iPad, the one that was just recently released, so there's a new generation. I think it's the sixth generation iPad that we are offering this year for the same price point as the iPad that we offered last year. Still the same monthly payment option over three years, same Apple Care coverage, same case. It's worked out really well this year. I'm sure the Integration Specialists can speak a little bit more about what it looks like on the ground, but the feedback that we've got has been very positive, and I think the systems that we had in place was a, were a very good start. We've certainly learned some things as this first year has, has gone on that we're looking to, to improve upon. One of those things being the management software for the iPad, and we still want to have families be, have the option of bringing their own iPad, just because that makes more sense for some families. But we did want to have an option where even students that are bringing their own iPads can purchase our management system, so that it's a little more oversight of what's happening on the school's network, making sure that students have the correct apps from us, rather than expecting them to get it on their own. And we can offer that for about $10, $10 fee per year.
But we did find that students necessarily weren't having the apps. They, there really was there, the deal was on them, you know, you have to, and we found that they weren't doing it. So it was hard for teachers to make a, have adjustments.
Teacher plans a whole lesson, expecting everybody has this app. They tell the students well ahead of time, maybe send a reminder home. The day comes to, to roll out that lesson, and you got to spend the first few minutes making sure students have it, or if it's a paid app, I got to go home and make sure it's okay with mom. So we'd rather just, if we can handle it here with a small fee from, from those students who are bringing their own, we can do that. It also.
It's a good solution.
And also, depending on how we work what's called the management profile, it would also make sure that the content that students are accessing from our network is all appropriate. It is not being used to.
That's important.
To cheat, or to share information, and we can have a little more oversight. We certainly got that feedback from, from the Integration Specialists, from some teachers. It's how other school districts that have a one-to-one program also man, also manage their, their data, so.
Yeah, because remember there was quite a conversation about, you know, if it's my iPad, then I could find what I want. And, and so we did find that, was it AirDrop? What was it?
Yep.
Yeah, there was some issues with that being handled, you know, as well as we could be handled, but we didn't anticipate that it was going to be the problem that it was.
Okay.
So that's why, you know, we want to move, you know, to something that, the question I had, Colin, was, remember we were talking about to just mitigate that prob, or the challenge, or the concern people might have, is could you, could you, you know what I'm going to ask you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, could you, could you have it be, the management system be, you know, on during the day, during, you know?
Ben's, Ben is still looking into that option.
You know, afterwards, you've, it's kind of your computer.
We've been, we've been in MCAS mode for the last couple of weeks, so, but it is on, on our list to make sure that we can, we can look into that. So we sent this letter out on Monday. We currently have, we, we sent this to every, to every family, just in case there was a family last year that was part of that one-to-one group that didn't have the opportunity to get an iPad from us. We wanted to make sure that they had that opportunity, but we were requiring incoming seventh and ninth grade students and parents to fill out this participation form. So far, we have around 40 responses. Again, it's, it's trending similarly to what it was last year. Half of them want to get it from us. Half of them said they're going to bring it home, and we currently have zero people that are opting out of the program.
Oh, good, that's good.
Yeah. So we'll hopefully see that trend continue. This, we're asking that this be completed by the first of May, so people have a few more days to do their research, look through everything. I'm happy to say if they go with us, it is still less expensive than if they were to get all the comparable iPad and case and everything retail, so they can still get a good deal from us, and they can pay month to month if that's more comfortable for the family. Suzanne is still handling scholarships.
I've already gotten one.
You've already gotten one?
Yeah.
Oh, great, that's better than last year. So they're reaching out to her, and she's seeing whether families qualify for a school iPad, either for free or for a reduced, reduced rate.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Is this letter going out to rising seniors, to current juniors, or?
It's going, yes, it is going out to rising seniors. They would obviously need to make that payment within their last year, so they couldn't stand up for the three-year program.
Right.
But yeah, we wanted to open it up to everyone, just, just because, you know, we have that opportunity, and let's get one-to-one sooner rather than later, so people want to join in, go for it.
And so should, would you advise senior students to, I mean, are the classes going to rely on?
So, no, we can't, we can't expect senior teachers to have a one-to-one classroom setting just because seniors are not part of that program officially.
Right.
And as far as my recommendations, I would, I don't know if I would make a recommendation. I would try to think about what that senior might be planning on doing following their graduation, and seeing if there's a piece of technology, certainly an iPad, will work for a lot of post-secondary options. If a student has something more specific that they want to get into, that may be used as a different platform, or maybe it has a different system, I would look into that more carefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I may have asked this of you before, but over the course of the year, has anyone who initially opted out, opted in?
We, yes, we had around 10 families around September and October, reach out to us and say, I think I missed the, missed the mark, or missed the deadline last spring, can I still get in on it? They were not able to get into our monthly, our month-to-month payment, but we did buy an extra set of iPads, and they were able to pay in one lump sum, and we were able to get them an iPad. So there were about 10 to 12 families that, I think, looked around in their classes and said, I like their case, I like the iPad, I like where this program's going, and they did opt in.
Okay, that's good.
Cool.
There we go.
Great. Well, now, we can get to the fun stuff, which is our Integration Specialists.
Yep.
So I'll invite them up. I'll queue up this television.
I'm in your subcutaneous.
Yes.
Welcome, ladies. Thanks for coming out.
Exciting.
They get very excited.
Very happy to see you.
There's a lot of passion for what they're doing.
This is such a beautiful presentation.
So you have there a, a little longer of a presentation. We've, we've trimmed it down, but you do have some great pictures there for a lot of activities that are drawn out of Penbrook. So I'll let our Integration Specialists take you through this presentation, and then certainly, any questions that you have of them or of me, please feel free to fire away afterwards.
I love that graphic.
Well, it's been a fantastic year, particularly, well, working with all the teachers, particularly Michelle and Georgie in the library. So we jointly work together often, and our project last week and this week, where we read 21 Elephants about the Brooklyn Bridge, and then we made bridges. And the student and I bought little animals to put on, to see if they were structurally sound. But it went really well, and at first, some students don't know what to do when they're not given directions, and I find that, it's good to have them just create, and to think about bridges. And one, one student, she designed a whole plan and brought in pieces, and they all assembled it cooperatively, like, it was amazing. So that's what we're doing now. I also worked with the fifth grade class, that's a video, I won't show you now, but they do, oh. And they did those PSAs, and this one is about, I think, changing food in the cafeteria, and we used the green screen. And so they came down to me, and I taped them, and then they picked the image behind, and they prepared their speech, and I recorded it. And then I did the QR codes, so that you could scan with an iPad in their room and watch the video. So, and some of these things I just did with, like, one class, and then other teachers want to do it next year. This was joint with Art, we did the Ozabots, was fantastic. Both Art, Art teachers did it, and they designed these playgrounds, and then the little robots, you know, run around the playground. And then next step will be coding with them. And in music, they came down and made instruments out of recyclables. It was fantastic. So that was good. Then we did Global Read Aloud, and it was, I picked the book The Wild Robot, which they read aloud, and then we made robots. I know, they made really cool robots, and they brought all that in. And then we did a Google Hangout with a class in Chicago who also read the book, and there's a video, a video there, which I guess I didn't give you access to. But, and you can see, we're down the monitor, and we're asking, we each prepared five questions each class, and we didn't tell them, had to guess where the school was. They had to guess, we were in Massachusetts and they were in Chicago, and it was really, really fun. So I hope to do, I was going to ask Margaret, if we could do the Global Read Aloud, you know, school-wide, and, you know, pick books in different categories. They have books for lower-grade picture books, and, you know, it'd be great to do that, and then I could do, I can arrange the Google Hangouts with other schools. And that was really fun. The kids really liked that.
It's like a check, it's like, what, what, what's another way to?
Like Skype.
Like Siri.
Yeah. And then I've been working with the science program a lot. They come and make our space. Monica took a dozen flashlights, which luckily I had, and today we did these earth models.
Remember the earth models?
Yes. And it's, you know, we've been using wind time really nicely for that, so I take Monica's students on Thursdays and sometimes most wind times. I've also done the stock market program with Cory's class on wind. I did that as well. So I'm trying to kind of get in, in there. But, oh, grade two, they all made volcanoes, which was very fun. Messy, all this stuff is very messy, by the way. And then I just started making lists, and these are some of the things that we've done. We have a new Geo board. A parent approached me about making a podcast, so I'm going to do that with some students, and we're going to do a test podcast, and then we'll kind of roll it out next year. But, oh, and then fourth grade, they do an animal project, so Google Sites is kind of hard to teach, and it's not on an iPad. So I found SimDif, and we're going to do the animal project as websites, instead of Google Docs, for the first time, and that's going well. So that's, that's underway now, because sometimes, you know, because they have one-to-one iPads, like, you have to find the right solution for them. And 3D printing, we're doing that a lot more now. Students are required, they get a Tinkercad account, and then they make a keychain to start with before they make more elaborate things. In fact, it's running now, the 3D printer, it's kind of always running.
All night, right?
It, it came out black instead of red, but I have to work on that. So at PD, we've been doing a Google Drive Classroom and Gmail, of course Gmail this year. We did egg drops in fifth grade, and earthquakes with Jell-O and marshmallow and toothpicks. And so as I meet with teachers and find out what they're doing, I try to integrate more hands-on kind of maker activities. The teachers created habitats at a PD day with recyclables.
Well, they did it themselves?
They did it themselves, so they can experience it, and it went really well. They were really good at it. And then, again, I, some of this stuff, oh, and I, I got the Spearho Grant.
Oh, yeah.
I was so excited. And.
Congratulations.
The kindergartners, kindergarten class, Jessica wrote a grant for Osna's, so they're going to do those. And then we do morning announcements that are recorded daily with student council, and so that, that's good, too. And I think that's it for me.
Good job.
It's exciting, it sounds great.
They're very fun.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Yes, it'll be here. Our slide will not move forever.
I know, we tweeted one slide for you guys, it's all there, and then you get to hear us.
So point fun. So we tried to categorize how we're helping teachers and students into three different categories. The first one being technology and makerspace integration. That's everything from low tech to high tech and everything in between. We gave you four different projects that we've worked on in, all were in the third, second and third quarter. There's a long list of other ones, but these were just four of our highlights, where we, the, pretty much the process goes, a teacher will reach out to us and identify an area in the curriculum that they're about to be going into, maybe within the next three weeks or so, four weeks. And they'll isolate the curriculum standards that they're trying to reach, and they'll identify what they've done in the past, and kind of what they have as a vision going forward. And then we have a brainstorm session where we ideate a bunch of different ideas, and we gather up a plan, we put together a proposal that usually has a couple of different options, one lower tech all the way up to like where you can take it way to the next level. And then the teacher identifies kind of where they want to end up with the new revised lesson. And then one of us, or sometimes both of us, depending on the needs, yeah, and the complexity, we're there for the initial rollout with the teacher in the class for the start of the project, or sometimes throughout the duration of the project, because a lot of little troubleshooting things will happen, or just the makerspace is such a great place that the teachers still don't know all of what's in there, so.
I just want to add one thing to that. So at this point, we're very good with having teacher approach us and things like that, but I was out in the first quarter, I was on maternity leave, and when I came back, we got guidance to give us everybody schedules. So what Liz and I did is we had a few meetings on our own, where we decided how to approach all the teachers, because how do you know what you don't know? So we actually approached every single teacher, we had meeting with pretty much every single teacher, to just tell them what we could be doing with them. And then some of them, where we knew they were maybe on the cusp of trying something new, we would go to them, but oftentimes, teacher would just come to us and ask. So at this point, we don't have to do that as much, even though we still will go to someone and say, hey, we haven't worked together for a while, let's do something together.
Oh, that's great.
So we're good with one?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll do a little bit about two. So as Liz mentioned, these are the three major things. We have only begun to scratch the surface of what we could do. There's obviously the first part that's exciting, but the second part is just as necessary. Digital organization, classroom management are huge. If you don't have that, then everything else can really fall apart. So one thing that we've been discussing, and Liz has used School-A-G for?
Seven years.
Seven years. I've used School-A-G for, this is my sixth year here, so just as much. A lot of teachers love it. It allows them to organize things digitally. We grade through School-A-G, we provide comments, we include rubrics, there are discussions and things like that. It is similar to Google Classroom, but it's a lot more advanced for what we need in the high school. So we have begun to help teachers set up their School-A-G pages. Most of them have something, even if they're not using it to the fullest extent. Apple Classroom is just the most exciting thing ever, because it actually helps with classroom management. In a class with 20 to 30 iPads, you cannot be going and running around and seeing what kids could be doing. So Apple Classroom is actually, they will join your class with the code, they only do that once, and every day they come to you, their iPad recognizes that they're in your classroom and automatically logs in. And as a teacher, you're able to see what they're doing on their iPads. You can lock one, you can push certain apps, you can do things like that that would allow efficiency as well. Not everybody uses that. We obviously don't have a ton of classes that have iPads. We have a lot of freshmen, or actually freshmen and sophomores, no, they both have iPads.
Eighth grade does not.
The eighth grade doesn't have it, but if we have mixed classroom, we can't use that, because not everybody has an iPad. But it's really great, and I don't have to worry about anything strange being done. I know my class is actually being followed. We are going to be setting up every teacher to use Apple Classroom, going, especially next year, we'll just be seniors who don't have any. Google Drive, as Mary Ann pointed out, for them as well. There's been a lot of transition with Gmail. We also have teachers who have used our server to store files, that need to transition those files onto Google. It's easy-peasy, but if your files are not organized on the server on your computer, then that's not as good. So we're helping them organize.
I was getting my tutorial today from Colin.
Yeah, they're getting there collectively, but it's some, it's one of those daunting tasks that, I mean, I've worked with, two particular teachers come to mind, probably between eight to 10 hours, each of them, and they're almost, almost done. So it's one of those daunting tasks that you just kind of keep pushing aside, keep pushing aside, until finally, we sit down, they're like, all right, do it now.
And we've given, I think, two, two half-day, two half-day PDs, where we've either done kind of a more beginner-based, get-to-know Gmail, get-to-know Google. If you know the basics already, use that time to get yourself organized, and when we make the transition, which we did over spring break, let's make sure you're in a more solid spot.
So what kind of digital files would you store on your Google Drive?
Everything, everything. Every spreadsheet, every doc, every presentation, every picture, every movie, every soundbite.
And then can you, like, move those into Apple Classroom?
So.
You can attach them.
Well, no, Apple Classroom is not Google Classroom.
Apple Classroom is just managing iPads to make sure that kids are on task, so they're not Google. So I know what's really.
But don't you want them on task on your, like, your spreadsheets or your?
You do, you do.
Videos or whatever you?
Yes, and Apple Classroom allows me, on my iPad, to see what all of you are doing at once.
On all of your devices.
Because I see every student.
It's more like a viewer thing?
Correct.
But things are organized in Google.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
It's where you file.
Kind of create your own.
It's like Dropbox.
Benevolent Big Brother.
Curriculum.
Speaking of personalized.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's where you file. Yeah, it's where you file.
It's like your hard drive. Say on, on a weekend, okay, this is what I want the kids to do for the next five days. Yeah. I, I'm sure you're planning ahead further than that, but just say, this is it. And you can put it all on your Google Drive.
Yes.
And then kind of watch them move through the, where you want them to be through the week using Apple Classroom.
Only in your class during your, so Apple Classroom is only act, active during your class.
Right.
Yes, so I could see what they're doing in my class, I can't see what they're doing after they leave my class.
Okay, right.
And that's a.
Why?
Right.
Where I would be, if it was my personal classroom, where I would be assigning tasks or assignments or projects would be in Schoolagie. Where you, as the student, would be organizing all of your information, all of your files would be in Google Drive.
Okay.
So the two work hand in hand. And one really cool.
They all work in.
They all, they all work simultaneously. But Google Classroom and Apple Classroom, totally different purposes. That's important.
Okay.
Name confusion.
Exactly. Poor naming job on one of them, I don't know. But, um, school, one thing to point out with Schoolagie, cause this is a fairly new thing as of the past maybe four or five months, is they've done a lot of work with their rubrics. And they've actually, um, imported all of the standards, both at the state level, all the way up to the national level, Common Core and everything. So when I'm developing a rubric for an assignment, I can actually pull the standards that I'm teaching to. And then measure, you know, Chloe's performance based on that, each of those standards.
Right.
Um, which is a huge time saver.
Huge time saver.
Huge time saver, so that's.
Right for the goals, what you want.
Yes, yes. And I will, another little thing to add about the Apple Classroom, so that's the classroom management, is when we aren't managing the iPads, it's a little trickier, um, to do that in the classroom setting.
So that's why we need to get the management software on all of the.
Yes.
Right.
It's just, it's, it can be done, but it's a little bit more complicated.
Right.
I know you just mentioned this a second ago, but could you tell me a little bit more about the difference between Schoolagie and Google Drive?
Yes, so Schoolagie is a learning management system. So if you've ever taken a grad class or anything that's using, used on Blackboard or Moodle, um, or anything like that, that's what Schoolagie is. Um, it's just, in my opinion, a million times more user-friendly, um, and easier to figure out, um, on your own. Google Drive is your hard drive. It's just your hard drive up in the cloud, so you can access it any device, anywhere, anytime.
And so you can create things on Schoolagie and save them on the Google Drive?
No, you would, um, create on Google Drive, save in Google Drive and import to Schoolagie to pass in. Schoolagie is my turn-in folder.
Yes, and students can pass in their assignments on Schoolagie at a certain time that they're very well aware of.
Oh, yeah, and you can, you can speak to that, right?
Yeah.
Eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah, I'm allowed to send messages. I get a bunch of messages from like my Spanish teacher, whatever teacher, that's telling me like it's due. And like, um.
You have two hours.
Yeah, and they have like little times, cause like, wait, when you enter like your home base, it gives you all the things that you need to do. But then you can go into certain courses for each one, so especially I'm taking Finlit, we use it every day. So she puts her assignments on it and then we do that assignment of the day and then we can import what we do on it. So it's very easy to do and I can access it from home or wherever.
Right.
And there's an app on my phone too, so.
Idea, like in a, in a perfect world, it would be a place to, to have a paperless classroom. You could receive all of your assignments via Schoolagie, work on all of your assignments either in Schoolagie or in Google Drive and turn all of your assignments in back to Schoolagie where then the teacher can leave comments and grade your assignment on Schoolagie without ever a paper being printed.
Exactly. Actually, I saw my junior class, they don't have iPads. They are not, pretty much the only thing they will write on paper is their tests. Everything else is on Schoolagie. I just graded their ten-plus page papers on Schoolagie. So everything is on, there's really no paper, which is, it's great.
And you said Schoolagie is most appropriate for the middle high school, so Pembroke won't be tapping in.
Yeah.
Google Classroom.
Pembroke is using Google Classroom just because it's a, it's a much cleaner, more easy to use, user-friendly. I, I can see exactly what I need, but it doesn't have the same functionality as Schoolagie does. And as Liz mentioned, um, since she's the guru and has been using it for so long, she knows all the ins and outs. And I know, I've, I've walked in on a few, uh, meetings when she's been working with other teachers and, and teaching them how to use Schoolagie as well.
We, we have had a number of conversations about this, particularly last year, right? Debating, okay, Schoolagie, you know, does everybody in the district have to use the same profile? And at the end of the day, we decided that there were a lot of people who already ve- definitely invested. And it was, you know, better for Pembroke, why would you change everything to Schoolagie when you have people that really know and use that? And then when it gets to the middle high school, because they have so much curriculum and so many different classes and courses. You know, it made, people had already sort of started that, cause remember we were sort of, the train was running and we were kind of hopping on it, right? So how, what was gonna make them the best and most smooth transition that really gave us the functionality that we wanted? And I think we've got the balance, I think.
Think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we only tried Schoolagie because Schoolagie, um, is, it, uh, has been around longer than Google Classroom. Google Classroom's only a couple of years old now, so.
We only had a few devices. We didn't have a lot.
Exactly. So Schoolagie has been around for much longer and we had started in the computer labs because that's where we had technology every single day to utilize such a thing, so.
It's been a process, but it could.
Yes, very good one. Um, so that brings us to addition, uh, district initiatives. So another huge piece of our role that we found, or knew going into it anyway, uh, but the year has proven, um, is to support the district, um, initiatives. And, um, a couple of them that we highlighted here, the iPad Academy. So, um, for this year, the incoming seventh grade and incoming ninth grade, um, will attend an iPad Academy, which will, um, take place on their orientation days for the incoming seventh and ninth grade, uh, respectively. Uh, going forward, it will just be the incoming seventh grade will have to do the academy for. But the objective of the academy is for them to come in for maybe about forty-five minutes or so and just get logged in and set up. Um, if they've leased a device, we'll provide them with their device that day. Um, and then we'll get them logged into their Google Drive account, um, their portal if they have questions about that. Um, their Schoolagie accounts, uh, if teachers have already created their pages, we'll shoot out those codes. Um, pretty much just answer all the questions so that the students are classroom-ready. So when they walk into class, no matter what class they're in, um, they can just walk in and the teacher can begin teaching. The teacher doesn't need to use part of the first and part of the second day and maybe part of the third day, ironing out some of the technology kinks. Our goal is to iron out a good chunk of them, um, before they come in, so they can just start going. Um, and then like I said, going forward, it will just be the incoming seventh grade for the academy.
That's a great idea.
It is, it's very exciting.
And I love it. It's just a user-friendly way to start the experience too, I think it, and, and you know, connect right away to YouTube.
Exactly.
And it's a nice, and it's a nice way that every student can hear from the experts what the expectations of that technology is and how to use it appropriately and efficiently, so the message is set from before day one.
Yep, and we'll review the tech policy, so that makes sure they're all aware of it and all of that kind of stuff. So there's no questions. Um.
Come on.
And there's no questions there.
I should, I should, I'm recording, I should not make jokes. Get it?
Okay, so that brings us to the, uh, new district tech policy.
So this is actually, uh, one of the most important things that we found that we didn't have with respect to now having one-to-one. Um, there were things that I think the hope was that they would work out without having it in writing. So, um, Liz and I sent out a survey to the teachers. First of all, we witnessed some of the things that were happening in the classrooms where there were issues. But we also surveyed all of the teachers to find out what they were experiencing, so what were the problems? Um, and Liz took a stab at the first draft of the district tech acceptable use policy because now, yes, we have cell phones, but we also have iPads and they're in the classroom. Um, and she and I finalized it and then we met with Colin and then we talked about it and agreed on. I think the next step would be, um, to have it approved by you guys?
Yes, cool.
Okay, there you go. Um, I think Peter's still probably looking into it, but I think that that would be the next step. So, um, this is something that the parents would get as part of the handbook, um, that they would have to sign off of.
We've always had one, we just need to update it.
Well, yes, we need to update it for iPads. We have it for cell phones and things like that, but, um, not the iPad.
Yeah, it wasn't writ, when I wrote the last one, it wasn't written with the idea of one-to-one in mind. Cause that was, it was maybe six years ago, so it was just.
It was a vision.
It was, yeah, it was in the back of our heads, but it wasn't a reality yet, so the language didn't have to encumber, you know, include that.
And to say a little bit about virtual, virtual reality proposals, so, um, if Liz and I had a baby, it would be virtual reality coming to work together. Um, it is something that we really would like to see because this can be as much as we want it to be. This could be as, you know, you sit in your cla- classroom waiting for teachers to come to you. But neither of us is that type, so we would like to see what the next thing could be. Um, I know that a lot of schools are looking into virtual reality, but more as viewing, so you could get a virtual reality set. Exactly. Um, there are classroom kits and Google Expedition, Mary Ann was looking into that one as well. Um, they would, they have a ton of content, so it'd be great to have that to enhance the classroom experience. But Liz and I also wanted to do something different in the high school and do virtual reality content creation. So we would like students to create three hundred and sixty videos in virtual reality. And we've done a ton of research to make that happen. We had a little bit of a, you know, what's the word, little like.
Glitch.
Glitch, glitch, I like that.
But that's okay.
That's okay. We did not get the grants that we were hoping, so we're thinking of Plan B. We have to figure out what that is. But it would require a couple of computers, three sixty-degree cameras. And we can actually have kids start to build that and, um, edit that video using a couple of different types of software that we would have.
Right, and the reason.
Long-term vision.
Yeah, the, the reason why we need a couple of new compu, desktop computers is because right now, with the exception of one, we don't have any computers that are powerful enough to handle the large, um, files and the fast processor that's needed to be multitasking amongst a variety of files that are that large. Which is why we need to get a couple of, you know, kind of very powerful, extremely fast, um, computers. We don't need at the moment thirty of them or twenty-two to outfit a classroom. We just need a couple so that those couple of kids that are ready to go there, um, are able to go down, you know, and, and get, you know, get going. Um, we were able to get the Adobe suite for a hundred licenses for the district this year, which was amazing.
So exciting.
Um, and there's a, a ton of kids that are, um, creating. Um, one of my students is creating a website, um, for a local company, um, that needed a new website. And he's learned Adobe Muse, um, which is their website, um, design program. Uh, and he's using his Photoshop skills, um, and InDesign we've used and.
And Martha Dodge, who teaches digital video and photography, she will be offering a broad Adobe class. And, uh, students could take, they get an overview of all of the, uh, different types of programs. And then they would work with their other content teacher to have a project. So it would be collaboration between digital arts and whatever else discipline they're interested in, so that's exciting as well.
Yeah, but the cool thing of virtual reality, there he is, um.
Oh, I'm here, I'm not virtual.
Uh, is for the students to, to be able to step into the experience. Um, there's a wide range of VR goggles that you'll see out on the market. Um, and a lot of the lower price point goggles actually, um, require you to put your device in the goggle and view it through an app on your phone. Um, and you don't, you can, you have the ability of moving, but you don't have the ability of interacting. Um, which is why we went with a goggle or we hope to go with a goggle that's a little bit more expensive, though not the number one price point out there. Um, that's one that's six hundred dollars a goggle, so that we kind of dialed back from. Um, but we wanted the student to be able to interact with the experience that they were in.
We actually did a field, we had, we did a field test on this, right? We, I think Mary Ann organized, uh, a guy to come with his goggles and we all had a chance to experience it. It is cool. It is cool.
Wow.
It is cool.
Yeah.
So that's our VR thought. Um.
Doop doo PD.
Yep, professional development, um, similar to, you know, Mary Ann, what we've done. We focused on the Google transition, um, organizing digitally, um, different apps and rolling those out, both that everybody can use. But then we've, um, uh, put the departments together and worked individually with the departments because their needs are going to be slightly different, um, from one another based on their content. Uh, and then we also did Maker Space Integration Day, um, that was a half-day PD where, uh, the teachers brought a lesson um, that they hoped to integrate some maker activity in. Um, and they walked away from that PD actually with the lesson, for the most part redesigned. There was a lot of follow-up that we had to do after that, um, for some teachers to finalize their follow-up because there's only so much you can do in a couple hours. Um, and they were able to roll out those new lessons to their class.
And the last one, vertical alignment and technology, this is something that we've been talking with Colin about, um, going forward. Pembroke has a lot of awesome stuff that I would like to have as well. Then they get to the middle high, we don't have as much. So it would be a great idea to have, um, a plan where, you know, once they get to high school, we, they build on whatever they learned in the elementary school. Uh, virtual reality would be a perfect example because they could view and then create. So, um, there will be meetings that Colin will.
The timing is good on this, um, the, the state is rolling out and, uh, publishing some new computer science standards and guidelines at the end of this year. Um, one of the biggest changes, well, there will be some type of high school graduation requirement in terms of computer science. What that will look like, we're not sure yet because the final draft hasn't been published. Um, but now is a very good time to make sure that that is vertically aligned. We know that we have the Project Leadway Grant at Pembroke for, for computer science units. Uh, we're working with SWIFT, which is Apple's, uh, computer science program, uh, middle high school. But I think now's the time to really flush out what that looks like vertically and making sure everything lines up in terms of the materials that we have, the teachers that we have, the courses that we offer and the new standards that are published.
Any questions about any of these?
Show your last slide.
The last slide. We asked some teachers to give us a little feedback. So.
Ms. Sworzkoff made it pretty.
It is kind of pretty, right?
For the colors. So, yeah, we asked, uh, some teachers and some teachers, this is just stuff that we've received, um, over the course of the year so far. Um, so we just grabbed a couple and put them up here as far as what teachers said about, you know, the experience about having these positions and how valuable, you know, they have been to their overall, um, teaching practice and the, um, end-user experience, which is the student.
And this has certainly been reflected in all of the PD evaluation forms that teachers, you know, turn in at the end of their professional development day. Anytime it's tech integration related, maker space related, always come back as very useful, very engaging, very informative, um, very practical. And, uh, I'm very happy to say that we've offered all of that PD with in-house, uh, in-house training.
That's fantastic.
Just speaks to the, the quality of work and the level of work that, that these teachers have done and the willingness to buy into the program from our staff. So, very happy with that.
And a lot of that, as you know, happens because of the people and their approach to it, right? You know, you can, you can create positions that aren't, it, it doesn't make the program effective. It's the quality of the people, the passion of the people, the commitment of the people. And, you know, I, they didn't talk about it, but they have been, they have been collecting, you know, keeping their hours just so we could just have an op, you know, just a, a little data, right? Just, you know. And, uh, you know, I mean, really, there, there could be two full-time integration specialists at the, at the high school. And I think the fact that, you know, Mary Ann, this is her job, gives her that kind of flexibility. But I think, you know, Liz and Sandra have done a phenomenal job, you know, given the time they have. And, but I have to say, you know, cause they might not say it. I mean, that log reveals that, um, you know, they are putting in many more hours than the three periods a day that they're sort of supposed to. You know, there are many days they don't get their preparation period for their class teaching because they don't want to say no to a teacher who's coming and saying, oh, I've got this really great idea, you know, can you help me with it? So, you know, I think that's something that we're trying to discuss, you know, in terms of, you know, you know, have we got the, the stipend right? You know, how are we, you know, how can we be clear with teachers what, you know, what roles they can and cannot take on? Because as they said, we can do any, they, we can do anything we want with this and it could get as big as we want it to get. But we also have to be realistic that they're two people doing two jobs, many, some of them more than full-time. So that's, I just want to say that on your behalf.
Thank you.
Because it is definitely the case and, as I said, I, I mean, we're grateful every day that you take up this on because just in one short year, you can see that the timing was right for it, the people are right for it, and it can only get better.
No, I, I do, I think it's fabulous that you've all taken this on and, um, your, uh, you know, your way of bringing it out, like your, your enthusiasm and things like that is really great. I've always said that about Ally Vieira, like, to me, anyone that doesn't like English would have to like it after they see her because she's just so like happy all the time about it. I love it. Um, so, but I see that in the three of you as well. So with what the superintendent said though, like if there are times that your prep time is taken away, how does that impact the classes that you are supposed to be prepared for? Like, is there a time that the kids?
It more impacts my life at home, cause then I, I do the, the mom thing.
But that's a good answer.
Yeah.
I am concerned about the kids in those classes. I am concerned about the kids in those classes that if, if, if it's, you know, it's, you're not ready for that. You know what I'm, what I mean?
And hopefully with their great grasp of technology, you know, technology kind of helps us to work smarter, not harder. I mean, if you can, you know, learn how to be organized and have everything lined up, that could assist with that vast quantity of responsibility and, and.
Like they don't miss a step?
Oh, um, no, so I would agree with that absolutely. I um, I, I know that this is definitely what you say during an interview when you turn your, you know, it's like, what's your greatest weakness and like, it's really, I'm not trying to do that, but same thing. I don't know how to deliver less and I, for me, my three classes that I teach are the most important thing. I don't want them to miss anything. I taught those, I've taught those classes before, but it doesn't matter because there's so much that's happening today and I always make it relevant. So I continue to plan. And if you were to ask anybody in my class, they are definitely challenged and I'm sure yours feel the same way. Uh, but then again, I'll go home and put my two kids to bed and then I'll be doing work. Um, another thing I want to mention, and this is, you can't have anybody who knows everything. Um, we work with teachers who do, who teach all classes, so variety of content. We don't know every single thing. So if someone comes to me and says, what's a great app to do a video, that's easy. But oftentimes they'll say, here's what I've done, I'd like to, you know, make it bigger or whatever. We have to become familiar with that content to an extent. And that is also what takes time on our own at home that we would, like nineteen eighty-four, I'm sure I read it. But I guess what, I read it again. I was just appalled. But, but you have to do that, exactly. Um, so yes, I think that's.
And they've been hundred percent committed, hundred percent committed, hundred and ten percent committed.
Thank you. And I appreciate the fact that Colin is, is the, the leader too, has taken this on and you're, you obviously are a huge support system for them because I'm sure that's the biggest thing is knowing that you can all support each other and then have, you know, Colin to back you up on that.
It's been my pleasure, it has been, you know, it's, it's something that I look forward to and, and like working with and, and it's been a piece of cake to work with, with these three teachers just because we're all, we're all.
Which is really cool.
It's really the future of education in so many ways. It's just where we're all going and, and to prepare our students for the twenty-first century society that we, we have out there.
It wasn't that long ago, if you remember, any of you that were on the committee, and Cheryl, you were probably teaching. And Cheryl was a good example. I mean, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't any up-to-date technology, maybe in a couple of labs. Um, you know, Cheryl had probably donated five or six computers of all different makes and models, but she was committed to having, you know, computers in her classrooms. So it wasn't really that long. We were relying on generous donations from companies that were, you know, getting new, new computers. And, you know, Barry had a, Barry had an inventory at one point where it was amazing, all of the different variety. And, you know, trying to imagine the limited tech staff we had, remember? That had to sort of run around and make sure things were working. It wasn't that long ago. And, you know, and then we did that wonderful tech plan. We had that wonderful, yeah, we did just, we had this wonderful tech plan and um, we generated all these great activities. We had no money, we had no identified money, but it's funny, all those things got done. Somehow, all those things got done from the graces of people, the talents of people, the donations of PTA, GEF. You know, it's just like the vision was there, but there was no money source. So I look back and then they're, we're going to do another tech plan, it's time to update the plan. But when we go back and we reflect on what was accomplished, I think we're all going to be very surprised and proud that it happened without that designated amount of money, like the vision was big.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, and now we can only go forward, so I think it's important to.
And the maker movement is really important, like there is magic happening in my classroom where I'm like, just listen to them.
I mean, that Makerspace is also open in the afternoon and you're doing things with kids before school.
Well, Liz is there after school two days a week and I'm there after school two days a week.
And actually, I shouldn't probably say this because people will probably all want to do it, but there actually was a birthday party.
Yes.
A parent asked Mary Ann.
Oh, it was at the, um, they, they bid on it.
And so family bid on it and actually had this party.
It was the best party.
It was awesome.
So I, if we really wanted to, we could probably make some profit off of this.
Can we book another, another parent was there, I'm like, oh, I don't know if we're getting into that business, but um.
No, but we're, we're also talking about simultaneously through Georgetown Cares and the, the work of the Asset Builders Network from the um, the survey results. You know, uh, the kids presented the other night, it was awesome. Um, but one of the things that, you know, came up is that there isn't enough for student, students felt. This is, this was a youth survey, right? That there wasn't enough to do, there really wasn't a place where kids, where youth felt supported, where they could gather. And um, you know, we've been talking, remember about, I remember I said you two, I was talking to the guys downtown about doing a town-wide Makerspace. Well, maybe we don't need that, maybe what we need is just an organization of, an organization of the things kids want that, that we could do activities throughout town, like the open gym, you know, on Tuesday at the middle school. You know, Makerspace open on, you know, Thursday night, you know, for youth. You know, you, you can maybe put it together in a way that, you know, kids, these guys wouldn't have to necessarily be manning that. You know, if you did something where.
I don't think they have the time.
They don't have the time, not unless we pay them a lot more money, like a lot more money, even then they'd never sleep. But we'd have to expand them, we'd have to clone you, we'll have to clone you. But, you know, places that do have um, community Makerspaces, uh, they, they charge fees, right? So they charge them, what was it, a membership fee or something? And, you know, so people can go and then that usually funds someone to spend time there. So it's like all of these things can be created, you know, they can come together and come, really great things can come. But these guys are the pioneers and we owe them a lot. They took it on, you know, gave them a little money and they knew what to do.
I, I just think it's amazing, a district of our size with our limited resources accomplishing what we have in such a short time, it's really amazing.
Well, it says a lot.
Very proud of.
Right, it says a lot about the community and, and the school community too.
I mean, you're changing cultures, that's what we're doing, we're changing the culture. And that's not, you know how change is, it's very hard for people, but if they have support and they have availability of access, you know, those kind of things, you know, you know, make it, make a difference because you get people to try it and then it just only expands from there, so. But this is, this is awesome. I've been looking forward to you guys coming, you know, all year, so thank you for making the time to do it.
I know, thank you.
Glad you got to showcase your work.
Thanks for having us.
Have a great night.
Thank you too.
Very great.
Do we have line item transfers? I didn't even see that.
Yeah, they are in there.
Peter just got here. Hey, Peter, question, Barbie asked a question. Have we ever discussed, since the prom is not sort of local, it's, it's local but not town, in the town, have we ever discussed like having a bus where every, all the kids have to get on the bus and?
Yeah, it depends where they go, like they wanted to go to Boston a couple of years ago, so go to Boston. Go on a bus.
But so what about Ipswich? No, you're not requiring it?
No.
Because it's too close?
Yeah, it's close and it's a big expense and the thing with the buses, everybody has to come and go at the same time. And a, a lot of people leave the prom, you know, within the last hour, they stagger, they just keep filtering out.
It's just safety, you're worried about safety.
You know, I know like Triton, their prom last year was just at the country club and they, here in Georgetown and they did the bus. And I'm like, oh, all right, yeah.
I said to Barbie, I've seen it done in other places, when we did it at Quaybach, you know, it was done, but it wasn't generally a, a wider, you know, a wider, uh, further drive, but.
Yeah.
I said we hadn't talked about it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know how, how the students would feel about it, I mean, I.
About the bus?
I, I love the safety aspect of it, I do, but on the other hand, if they don't like it then.
They went thrilled, because we were gonna, we were really close to, to doing that last year and.
That was in Topsfield.
Yeah, and I, I.
It was further away.
I put it in, no, it was, they wanted it on a boat in Boston. And then, um, like, like the truth started seeping out little by little. So there was another school gonna be on the boat at the same time. And then it, I said, well, you know, is it totally segregated? And, well, yeah, I said, are you sure? Well, there's a common deck, I said, we're not going. So maybe it's a brawl on the, uh.
Right, especially, yeah.
Right, I mean, Peter and his staff, because I go to the prom area, they, they're, all those chaperones, they're very vigilant about, you know.
No, I know they are, I know, when they're there, I'm not, I'm not worried, when they're there, I do know it's very well, uh, chaperoned and things like that. It is just the getting there and, and getting home that you worry about.
But that's kind of close, Ipswich, it's, it's kind of right around the corner almost, so. I mean, not, we got used to going to um, the Black Swan all the time, which is, you know, literally a quarter of a mile from the school, but before then we were a lot of places.
Danvers, a lot of Danvers.
It was Danvers, there was a couple in New Hampshire, um, and the kids, I, I, they were spending a fortune on the most.
Yeah, right now.
So it really um, changed things once they went there, so it'll be interesting to see.
Right, to see if people go back into the little thing.
Yeah, yeah, they didn't take, I thought there was, there were going to be a lot last year and there weren't. So this place is closer than the one last year.
Right.
Both, it really is, yeah.
No, they'll have fun.
They will, they'll have a great time.
That's the plan, that's the plan.
Yeah, that is the plan.
I could be a hundred percent on that, it'd be the absolute last prom I ever go to.
I don't know.
Oh, come on.
Enjoy them, right? Enjoy it.
Uh, well, yeah.
It's a beautiful location, I mean, it's a.
It's a good venue.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, it's a fantastic, I, I'm thinking of a.
There was an auction there.
Oh, I'm thinking of the place that the GEF is gonna be.
No, that, that's a Spencer Pierce.
Oh, yeah, I haven't been there either, no, I haven't been there.
I don't think it's Spencer Pierce.
Oh, no, no, it's not Spencer, no, no.
Is it Pierce's?
Wait, the Pierce, the Pierce sounds familiar to me.
Pierce sounds familiar.
Pierce is in the name of it though.
I thought it was on the Black Swan.
No, there, it's, it's down, they said right across from the Topsfield Fair.
It's not north, it's south on Route One.
Right?
Yep, it's in Topsfield.
Topsfield it's called.
It's on Route One?
I think it's like off, but, yeah.
Is it in Topsfield Center maybe?
No, it's down by the fair, is that Topsfield Center?
People should Google it.
I've read.
More information, welcome.
The place we went to prom last year was amazing.
Willowdale, yes.
Yeah, but it was very good.
It is beautiful.
Very expensive.
It was expensive.
And it was outside, you only could go into that gorgeous building for the bathrooms.
Yeah.
I, I know the tent was probably very nice and warm, but.
No, it was.
They'll have fun.
I'm glad it, it's.
They wanted to do, I tried to give them the pros and cons and they were a pretty, uh, headstrong group.
Yes, they are.
They didn't mind spending money either, they.
It was expensive, we were saying that earlier.
Yeah, it was really expensive, yeah.
Now, we didn't do the Credit for Life Fair with that group.
That's true.
That's right.
You might have learned you need insurance.
That's funny.
Thank you, Peter.
Yep, thank you, you saved me an email.
I figured I'd be grabbing one.
Yeah, that's good.
Was here.
Okay, line item transfers. Okay, so line item transfers, so make a motion to approve line item transfers, one seventy-four through two twenty-five. Uh, total amount, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Suzanne, do you need me to?
I know, yeah, please.
Actually, I have the original.
Oh, you have the original?
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we are going to talk about um, changing the meeting time. Uh, the last couple of meetings we, um, this one's the original. Last uh, couple of meetings we stand at six thirty and some people voice that they like that, so what are your thoughts on changing it from six thirty to seven? I know it's hard for people, I mean, from seven to six thirty, because some, you know, they live far, you know, far away or the kids, so I think the half hour would, would help, I mean, I know it's all pretty much an amendment and, you know, as I've always. Do you like that?
They kind of turn to toast at ten o'clock, I really prefer the earlier.
And how do you guys feel about that?
And actually, I just pulled the administrators a little bit and they're all fine. Because some of them have some distance to drive. And they're, they don't go home between meetings.
Well, that's the problem, not going home in between, you know.
That's, like that, at least we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate getting home, you know, make it an hour earlier, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to change the start time for school committee meetings from seven PM to six thirty PM effective at the next school committee meeting, which is May tenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't want to cut the meeting short because everything on the agenda is very, very important. I mean, it all needs to be given and due, but if we get an earlier start, then, you know, we have better attention, focus, I think it all.
Absolutely.
Which is better. It, it always is.
So this too, the superintendent evaluation, so thank you for including a, a, another copy of the process. Um, May twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, I gotta keep that in my head. Um, so your binder is ready?
Pam has it.
Pam has the binder, I just have one, I'm just finishing up the, the, uh, the goals. Okay, and then you have to see it because you go away.
Right, although, um, we're doing this the tenth of May? I think, I think we said we were gonna discuss it on the last meeting in May, because.
Oh, there's.
It's on this timeline. It says.
Wow, this is quick.
Barbie, it caught us, it caught us all off guard.
School committee members mean.
We're doing it tonight.
We really have to stay.
School committee.
No, we can adjust it whatever way you want.
Yeah, it just seems to me like five, three, I mean, that's like.
Yeah, that's how I thought, I had to go through the binder, it was like, oh. Okay, so we have a school committee meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
So.
And when do we leave? We could definitely do it in, do it in.
Okay, so how about we change it where the school committee conducts the superintendent's evaluation during our May twenty-fourth meeting?
Okay.
Okay?
Well, yeah, because.
Is that, it has creeped up on us very quickly. So I will ask that I get them by the twentieth?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
By twenty to me?
Yep.
Nancy, is that good? And then we can meet with you through, yeah, through.
That gives you more time to do that too.
Yeah, we could meet with you if you like.
The binder's pretty much ready.
The twenty-first even, well, the eighteenth, no, yeah, yeah, yeah. We'd have to do the eighteenth for you to get it to me by the twentieth, I mean, that would be like the latest, people would meet with you.
Yeah, yeah, oh, and that's very doable.
That's five eighteen.
That's, I think that's much more doable.
All right, so we can start filling your calendar up now.
Great.
With dates.
Next meeting is the tenth, is that correct?
Yeah, and you won't be there?
I will be there.
Oh, okay, so you're not missing any meetings, it was just the whole Baker Adams.
Right.
Thing.
Right.
How does this match up with Baker Adams?
What are we doing Baker Adams?
Very similar time.
Okay. It is very similar time.
Yeah.
Okay.
It always is.
Right. So what are you gonna do about that? You're gonna get them?
I ca- have they been?
I know, Nancy, have they been, I, I was gonna ask Michael tonight if, I don't know if you have been checking the Baker Adams.
I actually just checked the other day, um, and there were a couple, there was, um, because of the whole Google thing.
Yeah.
We had to change passwords, so I just got the new password. So, um, do you want me to start forwarding to?
No, no, you don't want one at a time, do you?
Well, not necessarily, but Cheryl would mind because Cheryl is going away.
Well, that's what I was thinking, maybe to, you know, get a batch of them and send it to.
Yeah, that means, yeah, and you know what, we also, I don't feel a redaction is necessary.
Okay.
What are you guys' thoughts on that? It, it's a lot of work for you to do that and.
Either way, I, I'm kind of neutral on the subject.
Yeah, what do you think?
Um, I'm just saying.
The names, redacting of the names.
Either way, whatever. Okay, so let's not redact then, at this point.
Yeah, and then, yeah, if you could do that, just send them a lunch show and you can get a one-up on them or whatever. And if you want to bounce things off me before you go away or whatever.
Just, just to clarify, um, for the evaluation, the superintendent evaluation report, we're just gonna use the old form. The way, well, we used the form for several years, I mean, it was very familiar to me. The last year, uh, we did not.
We tried, so Peter tried.
Tried, they tried, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just use that.
But this is online, so we can do this on the computer.
But this is online, so we can do this on the computer.
We can send you that electronic.
Yes.
I think I have my form on there.
Yeah, you probably do because we gave it to you.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
But if, if you don't have it, we can certainly give it to you electronic.
Okay. Okay, and then the school committee self-evaluation.
Should we do the same thing to it?
Let's do that the same timeline, so the May twenty-fourth, so the same timeline that we just did with, uh, with the superintendent's evaluation, okay?
Sounds good.
Yeah, that will be good. Okay, we had a donation for, PTA donating.
Second grade field trip.
Okay, so where'd they go? PTA was making the dress.
I'm not sure, you know, I honestly, I don't think I wrote that number because I wasn't sure. Because it's not one you had to approve, you know.
So what is it? Oh, it's eight eighty-seven?
Is that where they go to the Acton for the museum?
Oh, maybe, that's a great trip. I love that.
Eight eighty-seven fifty, yeah.
Yeah, that's a nice donation, very thoughtful and kind and generous of the PTA, it always is. That's, and I love the fact that they do the field trips because again, it's all encompassing. It's not, you know, all the kids get to, get to reap the benefits of the great work that the PTA does. Um, so I will make a motion to accept the generous donation from the PTA in the amount of eight eighty-seven fifty, which will offset the cost for the second grade field trip.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Can I talk to the PTA for a minute? You, you know, I don't know if any of you has a chance to go to the artist's show. But one of the things that they did as a result of that is they allowed us to pick, um, one of the, you know, one of the paintings for each school.
Yeah.
So I believe Mother Teresa was the one that they chose for the high school. There were, there were some students from Nora Cannon's art class that were helping with the programs. We said, well, why don't you guys, you know, let us know what you're thinking. I like the Mother, Mother Teresa was my favorite one too. And then I think for Pembroke, we're doing the Albert Einstein.
Oh, nice, I didn't get to see. Is, are there pictures online on our website, do you know?
There should be.
Oh, I did a blog on it, yeah.
The interesting thing, when I was there, I realized that that artist has been to our school in the past.
Yeah, did you?
And the two paintings he did of Martin Luther King Junior and.
Abraham Lincoln.
We already own that.
We do, so I.
Oh, that's so cool.
So they're going to put.
Yeah, it was.
They're going to put the two from the high school, I think they're going to move them to the cafeteria. So it's one of them's upstairs, they're going to move them together. They're still talking, because these are big.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the PTA and the schools.
When it's big. The PTA and the school are going to put, I believe, like a plaque at the bottom, you know.
Oh, nice.
But, um, yeah, it was a fascinating show and one of the nicest things about him?
He's great.
Is he sat, like after the, after the meeting was over, or the set show was over, he came and he sat on the stage and like all of these kids that were there and their parents, he like got them up on the stage one at a time, talked with all of them, let them get their pictures taken with them. I mean, he was so like generous with his time and you know, his message is one of hope and encouragement and everybody's important and he treated everybody that way. I mean, he legitimately is a guy who believes in those values and lives them. You know, so I was really impressed with that, like he really took that time to, to work with them. And it was really quite a fascinating show. I was mesmerized by it.
Well, I guess to think that his show was as effective as it was about seventeen years ago.
Wow.
And for me, it was just interesting because as he started painting, I'm, it's coming back to me, I'm like, I remember this.
I did not see it until the.
Yeah, I remember this.
But it was very interesting because as you're watching, you're thinking, what is that? I mean, he's like literally doing his thing.
I know, and then he flips it over.
What is that? He flips it over. Oh my God, there it is.
It is amazing.
I mean, it's pretty fascinating, you know, and thanks to the PTA for, you know, putting that on.
Yeah, that's great.
So, you know, he's local, but, you know, it was just, it was just a great, but I, I think we're excited about getting a painting, you know, that's going to come to the school.
Well, so when is the GEF gala? Because I would like to mention that.
I think that it is, I want to say it's, it's first week in May, let's just.
Okay, so it's coming up, right?
Friday night.
Okay, so GEF.
Let's just make sure we get this right, I'm sure I have it in here. The fourth, it's May fourth, Friday night.
Oh, wow, okay, and then, um, let's just, does it say?
Hundred and sixteen, hundred and sixteen Boston Street in Topsfield.
So Pierce Farm at which hill?
Which hill, that's it, you got it.
Okay, Pierce Farm at which hill, it's fifty dollars for tickets if you get it early bird pricing.
You can find it right online, just go to GEF.
Yes, which is very easy.
Or our Facebook page.
G E F dash kids dot com. So great, I hope that they have a very fun evening.
It's always a fun time.
Good. Okay, I am going to forego subcommittee reports because it's getting late.
Okay.
So I, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty PM.
So moved.
Yeah.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.